Okay, so let's bring the Village Board meeting, April 25th, 2022, to order. And it's with, it's with real heavy heart that I, that I announced that a good friend of the Village Board, Kevin Wengard, passed away over the weekend. Kevin was well-known to the Board, well-known to much of our staff. He was the brother of State Senator Van Wengard. On a, on a personal note, Kevin was, you know, not only a dear friend, but a, but a confidant, and a trusted advisor, and, and a guy that really enjoyed a laugh. So, again, happy half the Village Board. We certainly send our, our condolences to his wife, Sandy, and the extended Wengard family. So, in honor of Kevin, I know that trustee Washburn was also very close. If you would lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd be remiss if I, if I didn't also say that we welcome new trustee Andrew Doxy to the, to the Village Board. This is his first board meeting. Welcome, and congratulations. So, roll call, please.
Lawson?
Here.
Hewitt?
Here.
Washburn?
Here.
Doxy?
Here.
Anastasio?
Here.
Degroot?
He's here. So tonight, at the, at the top of the agenda, we have a number of public hearings that all deal with various zoning issues. I'm going to read the rules for these public hearings at this time, and they will apply to all of them. If you wish to speak, please fill out a public hearing form, which you can find on the table near the entrance. Once recognized, speakers should come to the podium and identify themselves with their name and address. Please speak clearly into the microphone. When applicable, I will first call people in favor of the application, and then call those opposed second. Speakers must direct all discussions towards the Board. I will not allow interchange between members of the audience and the petitioner. We recognize that, excuse me, we, we request that you do not interfere with nor inject comments while another person has the floor. Please keep all comments on a particular item before the Board, and no longer than five minutes. And finally, please turn off or mute your electronic devices. So I will now open up the public hearing for item one, which is ordinance 15-2021, 2022, and pertaining to the amendments on the zoning code, zoning code regarding allowed usage and the use classification system. Mr. Schultz.
Mr. President, members of the Village Board, this first ordinance recommends a change to the business and trade schools section of the use table and corresponding use definitions in the zoning code. Effectively, what it does is take what was previously a single category for business and trade schools and split it into two. One for indoor business and trade schools, which are allowed in mixed-use districts and neighborhood business districts, and then outdoor business and trade schools, which are allowed in higher-intensity business districts and our industrial districts, as well as some campus-scale public districts. We did this to better try to address the appropriate place for outdoor business uses, business and trade schools in particular. There's a related CDL truck licensure facility that the Plan Commission recommended approval of, subject to this ordinance being approved. But when we looked at the ordinance, we saw that there was a need for further definition here. So, that is the long and short of what this one does. I can answer any technical questions, but it's pretty straightforward.
Are there any? I see where nobody has signed up wishing to speak on this item, but I'll just ask the, the audience, anybody here regarding ordinance 15-2022, wishing to speak either for or against. So not hearing anybody, the public hearing for item number one is now closed. So I will now open up the public hearing for item two, which is ordinance 16-2022 pertaining to the amendments to the zoning code regarding accessory uses and home occupations. Again, Mr. Schultz, or is Robin taking this?
That would be me. Hello. So this is ordinance 16-2022 for home occupation and accessory uses. It only basically changes one line in, in the ordinance. It, it reveals with type B residential home occupations, which are by statute, one client visiting a, or one customer, or one employee visiting the home at any given time. This would apply to tutors, personal trainers, or hairstylists, or anything of the sort. And this is actually to match our old code, which had, basically had them be under staff approval for those. So what we had right now is type A, which is basically you doing your own accounting, no, no customers, no nothing, that has no permit. And then type B and C both needed a conditional use. We're just lowering the requirement from conditional use to staff approval, so it goes by right, staff approval, conditional use, as far as severity and impact of the home occupation. So that's all it is. If anybody has any questions.
Not hearing any questions from the Board. Again, I have nobody signed up to speak either for or against this, but I'll ask the, the public in, in chambers here, anybody here to speak for or against. Last call. So not hearing that, we'll close item number two, and we'll move on to the public hearing for item number three, which is regarding ordinance 17-2022, pertains to an amendment to the zoning code regarding allowable fences.
All right, I'll go ahead and do this one again, and bear with me, this one is a little complex, especially for, you know, what we normally do. So, this concerns 2021 Wisconsin Act 197. On March 18th, 2022, the Governor signed into law 2021 Wisconsin Act 197, a measure concerning battery-powered electrified fences. Senator Wengard, Fayan, and Jagler introduced the measure. Representatives James and Cabral-Guavera co-sponsored it, and it passed out of committee with bipartisan unanimous support. The, the entire text of the act is in your packets. Basically, what the ordinance, what the act does is that, oh, man, that, the, basically it says that the village municipalities are prevented from legislating against the creation of electrified fences. Sorry, my computer just decided to say, "Not enough memory," and my, my, my background went off. Okay, so this act preempts local municipal, municipal authority to regulate fences in the above cases. Current Mount Pleasant ordinance states as follows. Under materials, it says, "B, no electrified barbed wire, razor wire, or any other type of fence designed to cause bodily harm is allowed in any district, except the community development director is authorized to approve such fencing in A2, M2, M3, or P2 districts, subject to administrative site plan." Village staff were concerned with the wording of this act, because staff believe it unintentionally allows electrified fences on most lots without a permit. The staff consulted Village Attorney Smith, who agrees that the phrase designated exclusively for residential use is unclear. The act does not clarify who or what does the designation, and it doesn't really define what exclusively residential use means. If it, the plain language means that only residential, residential use is allowed, that means we don't really have any parcels that, that correspond to that. The Village contextually defines residential use differently in the zoning code, the comprehensive plan, and the Village property assessments. All three have different classifications for what constitutes residential use. By any of those definitions, the Village does not designate any property exclusively for residential use. Just as we talked before, we have home occupations. Any residential property can have a home-based occupation, or grow a backyard garden, commercial or agriculture uses respectively. Any R-zone property can have a family-based daycare, chickens, a bed and breakfast, a short-term rental, a church, or a public civic building. And our E zones explicitly authorize some agriculture uses. Mixed, mixed-use zones have even more complications. Village staff believe that under the new statute, a property owner could erect a battery-powered, armed, electric security fence in any of those situations without a permit, despite the fact that we do now require permits for fences, regular fences, that don't shock you. And the Village Board enacted the ordinance, as, as read earlier, that prohibits fences that cause bodily harm, with public safety in mind. And the staff believe that preventing those fences in areas where citizens live currently correctly balances the protection of private property and the protection of neighboring property owners. So the staff are particularly concerned with the loss potential to allow battery-powered, armed electrical fit, security fences in areas that have neighboring children or disabled populations. So we recommend that this ordinance change that mitigates the worst possible outcomes of the situation. Act 197 clearly intended not to allow electrified fences on residential properties, but the vague language of the act leaves open multiple loopholes. To correct this, the ordinance officially designates property exclusively for residential use in relation to this act by the state. This designation would not affect zoning, the comprehensive plan, or assessment statuses. The designation would apply to R-zone properties, MX-zone properties, any B-zone properties with residential units, units, and any property where residential is illegal non-conforming use. The Village staff also recommended applying the definition to any area within 50 feet of a property line of any of those properties so designated. However, the Plan Commission amended the recommended ordinance to remove this application. The Village staff and Plan Commission do recommend to approve that ordinance. Sorry, that was a long time, but this one is a little bit more complicated than most. Any questions?
We couldn't either ask questions now, but, I mean, this is on the, this is agendaed for, you know, for action tonight, so if it, if it's okay with the Board, you know, we'll, we'll weigh into all that then. And again, reminding everybody that this is a public meeting for the public. I see nobody signed up to speak either for or against this, but again, I'll ask those here in the, in chambers, anybody, you know, here to speak for or against. So not hearing from anybody, we can close public hearing for item number three, and we'll move on to the last item, which is conditional use application pertaining 6840 Washington Avenue regarding the Rocket Wash site plan application, SP 0922.
Mr. President, members of the Village Board, the applicant proposed drive-through car wash and self-service cleaning stations on the northwest corner of Washington Avenue and Warwick Way. The parcel currently contains a gas station with vacant fast-food restaurant space and a small car wash. The applicant plans to demolish these structures for the new project. The used personal vehicle repair maintenance is a conditional use in the B3 district, although no specific conditions are set in the ordinance. Therefore, the general considerations for conditional uses apply. Limited employee parking is onsite, and the site has triple stacking area for vehicles entering the car wash. Warwick Way provides access to the site, and the site maintains the DOT-mandated cross-access agreement across the front of the property. The applicant describes the site operations as essentially identical to the Rocket Wash on 31 and Spring Street, built in 2017. The application complies with the land use element of the comp plan. We don't have an adopted plan for local planning area seven. This meets the general base district standards of the code, as well as does not have any overlay districts. The use is allowed in the zoning District B3 via conditional use. In terms of villagers-wide regulations for site design, this does not meet a couple. That is, one, the applicant shall remove all upward-oriented lighting, except for spotlighting of official government flags. That's condition number one. As well as, the applicant shall revise the lighting plan to clarify the corrected color temperature of every outdoor lamp or bulb. No lamp or bulb may have a corrected color temperature greater than 3,000 Kelvin, which is condition number two. Terms of Division 90-430 landscaping and screening, the areas indicated on the site plan do not meet the requirements for vehicular use area screening or interior parking lot landscaping. Acceptable plan will need to be approved by staff prior to the issuance of a building permit, which is condition number three. Just as a note on that condition, I've already spoken to the applicant civil engineer after the Plan Commission meeting last week, and they're already working on these conditions for site development. Terms of administration procedures, this follows both the site plan and conditional use procedures in the zoning code. As a fiscal note, the property currently has a land value of $2,279,000. The Rocket Wash on 31 has an accessible value of about $2.3 million. This would lead to a negligible fiscal impact for local taxing jurisdiction, jurisdictions. However, the tsunami car wash at 6315 Washington Avenue just recently sold in early April for about $3.7 million. If those valuations continue, the assessment could increase for this type of car wash. The property fronts Washington Avenue, which is also State Trunk Highway 20, and the state's responsibility to maintain. The county handles the annual maintenance and plowing duties, and there is no municipal financial incentive tied to this project, nor was there an ask for one. Terms of conditional use and criteria, you have them in your packet. These are the seven standard conditional use things that you should review when approving or denying a conditional use. Staff believe they met all of them. There was some conversation at the Plan Commission regarding the western lot landscaping and screening adjacent to the vacuuming area between them and the upcoming neighboring coffee establishment, which is mostly a drive-through establishment, but does have a little bit of an outdoor dining walk-up window area. So with that, condition number four, the applicant shall screen the area on the western lot line adjacent to the vacuum areas. With one of the screening options in the zoning code, and the screening option shall be subject to staff approval. We already had that conversation with their civil engineer as well, and they're working on applicable screening options. There is a transmission easement for some overhead wires there, so they are eliminated in terms of the screening on the west side of the property that they can install by We Energies easement that is from like the 1920s. So, we'll, we'll work with them on getting screening for the vacuums, but within that easement language. With that, the Village staff and the Plan Commission recommend the Village Board moves to approve the site plan and conditional use. Lawson, thanks, are here, if you'd like to ask them any questions before you get to the public part of the public hearing.
Would anybody from the Wilcom contingent like to speak to us?
Hello, everybody. We're excited to bring this new development, hopefully, to Mount Pleasant. It is identical, almost identical to what we're do, we've done on Spring Street and 31, so we're here to answer any questions.
Just for everybody who doesn't know, give your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Most of us do, but some may not.
I'm Mike Wilcom, and that's my partner, Jim Wilcom.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah?
No, I don't have any question, but I want to make a comment. Again, like Sam indicated, it was a pretty good discussion of the Planning Commission, and, yeah, there was some concern about the DB level, the noise level for the coffee shop. I wasn't concerned, because if you look at the DB level on the, on the Washington Avenue, that probably is more than what the car wash is going to produce. And my only comment is that if there's any indication of the success of the car wash that we have on the, the 31 Spring Street, I'm very excited. I think it's going to be even bigger and better than that, so, thank you.
We hope so.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, if I might, Nancy, well, I don't have to identify myself, sorry. I'm used to being on your end. Oh, goodness. My question here is, I have a couple of questions, and one of them, Ron, I think you answered in regards to the coffee shop. I was just curious as to whether the coffee shop owner knew what Wilcom wanted to do.
They haven't taken ownership of the property yet, so the property notification went to Wengard Partners, who's the current landowner. I'm not sure if they passed it on to their eventual buyer or not.
Okay, but Wengard's been notified.
Yep, and, you know, I think our two adjacent, property adjacent related things were the screening for the, for the vacuums, as well as that cross-access easement that the DOT has in place there, and both of them are being addressed through their site plan efforts, so I think those are only our main concerns for the neighboring property.
So then you're pulling the gas pumps out?
Scraping everything, starting over.
Okay. And are you going to bring the dish down?
I don't.
We love the dish.
I don't think Sam would approve us trying to squeeze all of that on that small parcel.
Two-story dish car wash.
All right, and I, so you're no longer going to have your, like, your drive-through for your inside, you know, for your store?
Well.
I'm very bummed about that on a personal level. I'm there every, I think I'm there every day.
I wish more of your friends would have came there, and then we wouldn't be here trying to redesign this place, but unfortunately, we can't compete there as it is today. We need to do something different.
No, the Rocket Wash is great. I just had those couple of small, minor questions, Mike, and we wish you nothing but the best.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Again, we have nobody signed up to speak either for or against this particular item as it relates to the public hearing, but for those in chambers, for the sake of being legal, anybody here to speak for or against? Not hearing from anybody. We'll close the public hearing regarding the conditional use for the Rocket Wash site plan. And there being no other business in front of the Board for the public hearing, we can close the public hearing part of our board meeting and move on to the next agenda item, which is public hearing. That has to do with everything other than the public hearing. Public comment, I should say. So members of the public are welcome to provide any comments on any matter. Please listen for the President to recognize you, state your name and Please listen for the president to recognize you, state your name and address for the public record. Comments are limited to three minutes. And I have James Coots signed up to speak. Name and address, sir, for the, for the record.
Yes, my name is James Coots. I live at sixty-eight twelve Green Ridge Drive. When I purchased that property back in two thousand nineteen, we contacted you guys about a cul-de-sac that's in my front yard. Now, I've worked with numerous times for years here trying to get this straightened out before we bought the property. I mean, excuse me, three months prior before we bought the property. Once we bought the property, we came back here. You guys didn't even know there was a cul-de-sac in my front yard. The attorney, Chris, has been out, I believe, and saw it. Some of the other members have saw it. Now, we run the impression they came to you, you guys came to us and said, we're going to take it under end of domain. My attorney at that time said, well, Jim, you're pretty much up the creek without a paddle. So we backed away from it. You guys did the sewer work on the south side of the road, not the north side of the road. Now I want my front yard back. If you look back and you see in nineteen sixty-four, when the original owners purchased land, you guys never gave them a tax credit, number one. Number two, you got the road larger and larger and larger as years went on. We have video or surveillance of the satellites of this proof. You guys didn't even know in two thousand eight or in, yeah, nineteen eighty, it was gravel, and then you came in and paved it. You put the road in illegally on the people's property and never noted it in your guys' records. Now that you've had it there for ten years, it comes automatically your land. I don't see how that's possible. You haven't given me a tax credit, but you guys just make the road larger and larger and claim it after it was gravel because you maintained it? I don't believe that's right. I want my front yard back. You guys, you guys say that, oh, that's there for garbage trucks and everything else to turn around. I got video of Oaks Construction turning around in my driveway because it's too small. If you want to carry it through, why don't you carry it through into the west and put the cul-de-sac over there? My yard looks totally opposite from every single piece of property on that road. I want my road back because it was done illegally, it was never posted and put on record. I'd just like to work with you guys somewhere or another and try to get my road back. I'm trying to do it the right way instead of cutting the road and removing it myself, and Chris advised me, and that's probably not a good idea to do. So let's work together on it. That's what I'm asking.
Is that it?
That's it.
Well, thanks for your comments. Because your, your item isn't agenda, we can't get into that discussion.
I know that. I spoke to Chris, and Chris said, come up and see what could be done, say something, try to get on the next agenda. But I work out of state. I work in Nebraska, Iowa, Minnesota, Michigan, Colorado, Indiana. I built the new Amazons. So me trying to get back here on your guys' date is pretty so much impossible when I work eighteen-hour days.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
But couldn't we, even if, if Mr. Coots is traveling, I understand that, but I believe Chris now has an understanding of his situation so that at least Chris in a cow meeting could discuss it with us and we could get Mr. Coots back at a time when you're in town? You know, we don't have to have you here necessarily, I don't think. Chris, would you?
I, I am, I've had a full understanding of this for some time, and I've had numerous discussions with Mr. Coots. The last conversation I had with him was, yes, do not, well, I can't give you legal advice, but I said, if you would just start cutting up the cul-de-sac, I would assume the police would treat you just like anyone who would start
Right, all I'm saying is, could we put this on a cow meeting to, to follow up on it a later date?
But furthermore, I've given Mr. Coots my opinion, which is that there's, and I've given him the statute that says if a unrecorded public road, street, has been maintained by the government, the municipal government, for more than ten years, it becomes a public street. And I understand he doesn't like that answer, but I invited him to just tell me, if I'm wrong, show me. And then I told him when the meeting was tonight, but that's, that's where I'm at on this, Nancy. If you want to have more of a discussion at a committee of the whole, we can put it on the agenda, but at this point, I told Mr. Coots, the only way to legally do it from his perspective would be to go to court and get an order saying he has rights to that.
I don't know.
So I don't think there's any board action
I understand.
That would be needed.
I understand. I, I think for background purposes, it would be very nice to be able to look at his property, have a minute to, you know, understand the situation physically, physically. So that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, and we can do that.
He's come tonight, and I would have no problem doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I concur with my colleague Nancy Washburn, at least, because it has been brought to the board's attention. At least we should have an opportunity to, to learn more about the details and at least have a discussion on what happened in the past and where we stand and where we go from here. So I think I would very much like to have it on a cow meeting or some agenda in the near future.
Just for discussion, sure.
Anybody else here to speak on public comment? Mr. Coots, we'll be, we'll be back in touch with you. Anybody else? Okay, there being nobody else, we'll close public comment, and we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is consent agenda, Trustee Hewitt.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
I lost my motion.
So hear a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So that motion carries. So let's jump down to public works. We've got an item here, which is discussion, possible action regarding the award of contract for the twenty-twenty-two paving program to the low bidder Payne and Dolan for the amount of two million, four hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-six cents.
Mr. President? I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of contract for the twenty-twenty-two paving program to the low bidder Payne and Dolan for the amount of two million, four hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and eighty-six dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second.
So hear a motion and a second.
Yeah.
We have anybody speaking to this?
Lindsay's here.
Let's hear from Lindsay.
Sure, so in your packet, we included all the bid tabs received. There were two bidders. We had Payne and Dolan and Stark. You can also see the engineers' estimates. Payne and Dolan came in low, and we came in under budget, which is always nice to see.
Very competitive this year, Lindsay. I was very impressed by that, and I think having Oaks as the concrete contractor as well, as part of that being so local.
Right.
We really got some hard pricing, and I think that's terrific.
Yep, absolutely.
Very, very good. Our budget stretched. Very good for our budget.
And I think everyone has it in their packet, the list of roads that are going to be done.
It's amazing.
It is an amazing list, so this will be, we'll be highlighting this as part of
On the Village website as well.
Yeah.
And how many miles was that again?
Ooh, gosh, I don't have a breakdown of the mileage.
Sorry, that was a test question. I, I didn't prepare you, and I didn't have the answer either, and I'm on the, so thank you very
Perhaps that would be a good idea for social media. We could have a contest, figure out how many, there you go.
How many miles are we paving this year?
How many miles are we paving this year?
There you go.
And there's, there should be a fiscal note on that, too, Mike, if you want to weigh in on how this is getting paid.
Yeah, as part of the two thousand twenty-two budget process, this is, you know, something that we talked about, I think, at the very end there, as part of those budget workshops, and in fact, this dollar amount came in a little bit less than what we had budgeted, so that's great news.
I think it's noteworthy to point out, for everybody's knowledge, that this is, this is a paving program that we are not borrowing for. This is done strictly on the levy. We're paying cash on the barrelhead for this entire project, and I just, it's, it's kind of a first for the village because usually we're, we're doing some bonding for our roads, and in this case, we, when we sat down and did the budget, we wanted to see what we can do without having to borrow.
Yep.
So I think that hopefully this is a good, this will be good going forward because we're trying to build the monies into the budget so we don't have to rely on borrowing as much. So I think this is a great first step. Any other thoughts? So regarding the paving program, roll call, please.
Clausen.
Aye.
Hewitt?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Doxy?
Aye.
Batia?
Aye.
Anastasio?
Aye.
DeGroot?
Aye, that motion carries. So let's go down to some Planning Commission issue, which is discussion, possible motion to approve ordinance seventeen dash twenty-two, which is amending the Code of Ordinances, Village of Mount Pleasant, Division ninety dash four thirty-five, fences and walls.
Yeah, well, I would just remind, we spoke on this, again, I went through
Can I get the motion first?
Oh, sorry.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve ordinance seventeen dash twenty-two, amending the Division ninety dash four thirty-five fences and walls of the Village of Mount Pleasant Code of Ordinances as previously presented.
Second.
So hear a motion and a second. Now, Mr. Powell.
It's been a minute since I've been to a Village Board meeting. So basically, the executive summary that I stated at the public hearing still stands, you guys remember that? The Plan Commission recommendation, they voted on pretty much every clause separately. There were, the what comes out as far as recommended for is the clauses one through four, and they recommended to strike clause five, which was the R, any sort of within, within fifty feet of an R-zone, or the other kind of clauses about that. So the, the only one that was unanimous was the first one, R-zones. Everything else was three-three. And you guys can, can take that, you can tie-break those, or you can obviously, you know, vote to put anything back in of those particular things. So questions about this? I know this was a, like, a big ordinance, and obviously, Chris can answer to this, too, because he had a lot of input on this particular one.
Did you want to add anything, Chris?
We're just trying to, you know, the way our code is, you know, pretending the state law doesn't exist, I think makes sense. It was adopted by the board. The idea was with this amendment to try to keep it that way without completely disregarding a state law, which we can't do. And so I think this is a way that we can accomplish that, and if I'm wrong, it puts the burden on a person who wants to put up an electric fence in a residential neighborhood, it puts the burden on that person to prove, you know, that our ordinance is wrong, rather than if we don't adopt this, allowing someone just, just to put it up without a permit, and then the burden on us to try to enforce that. So I, I think it makes sense. It's obviously a new law, so this is brand-new, fresh snow, you know, term they use in downhill skiing.
Powder.
Yeah, fresh powder. So that's what we're trying to accomplish here, okay, is basically to keep our code the way it was and not be preempted. And Robin said something that, that's important. I don't believe doing so is, is going against the spirit of the state law. I think it was just kind of sloppily worded, okay? Because it says, you know, this preemption does not apply to any property exclusively designated for residential use, without defining what that means. So what we're doing now is taking that and defining it, okay? We're saying for purposes of this law, this is what's exclusively designated for residential use when we're talking about the electric fence permit law, okay? So I don't know if that helps you or not, but it's kind of a confusing issue, but that's the bottom line, is we're trying to keep, keep what we've already passed in our code as valid and enforceable.
So for either Chris or staff or Plan Commission members, the spirit of this law as it's written, was it intended to apply to commercial places, places of business, for them to be able to add more security? We're assuming that Ag isn't affected by this because Ag has always been able to put up fence chargers and that sort of thing for the keeping of livestock. You know, so the, the distinction that we're making is that, no, you can't put this in your backyard to, because you're teed off at your neighbor.
Yes, that is, that is the, the intent of it. Senator Wengard spoke to this matter, and his example was theft of automobiles off of car dealership lots. So you would still be able to use an electric fence for that purpose, and it would even be taller than what our code currently allows, and that, that purpose would also not need to require express permission from the Community Development Director if that particular, well, that, sorry, that clause was struck. So industrial, agriculture, and business that does not contain any residential would all be okay to, to put one of these up. I had a clause that said any, any zone that bordered residential, so shared a border, it would have to be fifty feet away. That clause was struck on recommendation of the Plan Commission. So that is where we are right now. So yes, I believe that, that was the intent, and our intent is to, you know, sort of cover it up and make sure that we know that these will not be allowed in our residential zones.
Okay, so it's for commercial, and they're protecting high-value items within that entity. So even though it is commercial, you Rocket Wash guys don't get any ideas here because electric fences and car washes, yeah, I don't know about that.
No razor wire.
We do need, I think, to clarify something here, so the motion was to approve the ordinance as presented, and Robin has talked about how there was an ordinance presented by staff. Some of it was recommended by the Plan Commission, some wasn't. So I think we need to have a little discussion about what it is, what version, and I don't know if Robin or Sam have any comments on that.
I think the default would be what the Plan Commission recommended and put forward. If anybody wishes to alter that, they can make, make a motion on, on that. So they, what the Plan Commission recommended and put forward was clauses one through four, which is any, so clause one is, these are what is defined as exclusively residential use. Clause one is any property zoned residential, that's R-E-R-L-R-M-R-H. Any, clause two is any property zoned mixed-use, that's M-X. Clause three, any B-one, B-two, or B-four zoned property that contains dwelling units. They, they are allowed in limited incidences in those zones. And number clause four, any property, including where a current residential use is a non-conforming use, whose current primary use is residential, determined by the village assessor. For cases with no available assessor determination, the community development director may designate a primary residential use. Those are the four clauses that were recommended by the Plan Commission. The, the fifth clause was any property within fifty feet, or any area within fifty feet of any of those properties zoned one, one through four, and that was struck.
Struck. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'd like to elaborate a little bit more on the discussion we had in the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission was not questioning what we are doing here. I think the issue was that since this is a vague language, like Chris said, so there are, something is not very clear in the state statute, the Planning Commission felt that the right remedy would be to go back to the state statute, go back to the state, and ask them to clarify the residential use. However, the residential use. However, after long discussion, the consensus, the consensus was also that, however, the legislation not going to be in, is adjourned until after the election. They're not going to be back until the next year, and with the new legislation and the governor, who knows when this will come back to the, to, to their agenda. So because of that, I think that was the, the essence of the whole discussion. And like Robin said, and as Sam said, then obviously, we went through each one item, defining what's the residential, and the fifty feet was, it didn't pass. So I just wanted to clarify that the Planning Commission was not opposed to what the attorney is recommending is the remedy. So in the meantime, it seemed to me that this is a good way to go and, and to protect the village.
State legislation is, you know, routinely cleaned up, once the unintended consequences kind of start bubbling up to the surface. And, but at the, at the Plan Commission level and at the staff level, you know, we gotta do what we can control.
Yeah.
And the state may or may not get around to cleaning it up anytime, and we have to have something that we can operate with.
Mr. President?
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
I just want to, I wasn't at the Plan Commission, but I see that a lot of time and effort has been spent on this, but I want to commend Robin and Chris especially for being proactive, because I think a lot of times, these fuzzy areas in the law show up when somebody does, you know, before a landowner tries to put up a fence, and then says, "Well, it says you can't restrict me from it in the Wisconsin state statutes," and then we'd be in a big hassle over it. So I think that being proactive like this is, will really benefit the village, and thank you for, for doing that.
I'll just tell this board, because I've represented in my career a number of different municipalities, that I've never seen a more proactive planning staff than I've seen here. And this was Robin and Sam discussing it, bringing it to me to think of solutions. But you should know that. It's, it's off the charts.
I'm glad Denise brought that up, because we discussed the Planning Commission, and another discussion was that if the remedy, because the legislation is not in the session, could that be led by the League of Municipalities? But again, that's a long process, so again, to go back to your comment, and we complimented the staff at the Planning Commission, is that Mount Pleasant is again showing the leadership to the rest of the Wisconsin League of Municipalities. So hopefully, after this, the rest of the municipality will also say, "Just copy and paste." So again, thank you for your leadership.
Well, with that pat on the back, we'll call, we'll call the vote. Roll call, please.
I did have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, just before we do the roll call, so this does not apply to dog fences, underground types of fences. It's only above ground. It states above ground in that specific. And then you said, "We don't have, we, we do or we don't need a fence permit?"
So for this, for the way the, the legislation says that a municipality cannot prohibit nor require a permit for this particular type of fence, which in the ordinance also says it needs to have a five-foot fence in front of it, so then you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to require a permit for the regular fence that's in front of it either, which is confusing and odd. So, but...
Why would they?
Yeah, so we tried to just clean it up the best way we could, but it only applies to these battery-operated electric security fences. Our regulations against barbed wire fences, razor wire, and, you know, I guess there's ones with shards of nastiness on them. All of those still are, are just as effective as before.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, so with, with regards to ordinance 17-2022, roll call, please.
Clausen?
Aye.
Hughett?
Aye.
Washburn?
Aye.
Doxy?
Aye.
Batia?
Aye.
Anastasio?
Aye.
DeGroot?
Aye, that motion carries. We've got a number of reports, I think. Let's move to the minister.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our HR Director, Carol Teal, has announced that she is retiring, and that retirement is effective June 2nd of this year. We thank her for her service, but tonight I have the pleasure of announcing our new HR team. Our HR Director is in the room, Mary Cole, who you all know. You want to stand, Mary? Okay. Mary, of course, has been promoted to the HR Director. She was in the deputy finance, deputy HR spot. That spot was vacated when she was promoted to HR Director. So we also have in the room the new deputy HR finance person, Heather Tiglin. Heather, if you'd please stand. That is our new team, and of course, you remember Mike. So Heather is in that job share where she will, Mike is our finance director. Mike, you have to stand up, why not? Let's everybody stand. So we have a new addition. This is our HR and finance team. I think you're gonna be very pleased with what they do, and we hope that they're with us for a very long time. As we go through the McGrath pay study, you know, we often talk about how we have 180 employees, and that is our full-time employees. I got kind of admonished by our consultant that I should be talking more about the part-time employees that we have. And that brings the number of how much impact these three have. When you add the 250 seasonal and pole workers that we have, the consultant said, "You should have two full-time HR people." So we're happy with where we are. I'm not suggesting we add any more, but I will tell you, these three are very busy each and every day, when you think about it in those terms. So Heather, and Mary, and of course, Mike. Mike, who's been with us now for a year, six months. Mike gives me a hard time. It's actually four years. In any event, please welcome them to the village, and Mary, of course, is already in her office. And Heather starts in two weeks, May 9th? There you go, May 16th.
Let's give it up for Mary, Heather, and Mike.
Yeah, welcome. Congratulations. Welcome, Heather.
Item number seven, announcements and/or recognition of village residents, employees, memorials, and non-political community events. Anybody have anything good for the cause? So there being no other business, last motion.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
A motion of second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.